Good morning. We're actually on time for a change. Mr. Bale?
Mr. Chairman, our good friend Sheriff Larry Curious is going to come up and do the indication this morning.
Let's go together first.
I have a little father. We're so thankful of this opportunity to come together this morning to conduct the business of our county. We pray, Lord, as we go into this session, that you'll be with each and every one, that the decisions made here today and the information presented to our commissioners and all that is done here will be pleasing to you. We're thankful this morning, Lord, for the safety that you have provided for us throughout this weekend and that we just pray, Lord, as the first responders continue to respond, that you'll put a hedge of protection around them. We ask all things in the holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would say this with comments, whether the sheriff be here or not, your staff really did a great job this week. Appreciate it. And glad everybody's safe. Okay. Has everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes? Are there any corrections? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Got a motion on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Any adjustments, Mr. Hennicott?
No, sir.
Okay. Any from the commissioners? All right, now, any motion to approve the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Got a motion on the floor, is any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Presentations. Mr. Wade, our director at the Maxwell Center is going to give us an update on all the good things that are happening out of the Maxwell Center.
Thank you very much for having me here this morning. Before I start, the first thing I'd like to do also is, I'm not sure that everyone has met my full-time staff, so I would like to introduce my full-time staff, my director of sales and marketing, Christina Williams, my two event managers, Marisha Simmons and Camille Gayden, and they are helping me make everything happen that we're about to talk about. Since the Maxwell Center has opened, we have had 23 event days. An event day is per event, so on some of the days when we've had two or even three events happening the same day, an event day is counted per event. So if there's two events going on, that counts as two event days. So we've had 23 event days total. In May, we have 17 contracted events coming up this month and eight additional potential that people have contracts and hopefully they will return those contracts and they'll become contracted also. In June, we have seven contracted and nine potential coming up through the rest of the year. From June on, we have about 33 contracts already signed and 46 additional out or proposals out. And already for 2019, we have a few contracts and about 24 potential events that we've already talked to. So as far as number of events, we've done very well. Since our grand opening, we had excellent publicity from the grand opening. We had excellent feedback. We've had a constant source of people contacting us in person, by telephone, and through various Facebook, website, email, all of the different ways that we have out there that they can get in touch with us so that we can set up an appointment with them to give them a tour of the building, sit down and talk to them about the event they want to have. Some of the events that we've had in addition to our opening include some agricultural meetings, oxen herbicide. We've had the Farm Credit Board meeting. We've had a meeting with Goldsboro Milling, the Eighth Grade Career Fair, Wayne County STEM Fair. We had a group from New York University, a focus group. We had the Friends of Seymour banquet. We've had various meetings and trainings, the Wayne Community College Career Fair, the Girl Scouts Award Ceremony, the Rosewood High School Prom. So we are getting a very wide variety of events coming into the building, which is great. The Rosewood Prom this past Friday night had a fantastic time. They've already told us that they would like to come back for their prom next year and they also would like to look at dates for their Fall Farmer. And so that's good. Some of the events we have coming up in the next few weeks include the North Carolina Central University Reception, the Wayne Woman Expo, Wayne County Livestock Show and Sell Banquet, Fellowship of Christian Athletes banquet, the 333rd Fighter Squadron graduation. We have some family reunions, some school reunions, dinners and weddings and trainings. We had a gentleman call us yesterday who, he wanted a room today and tomorrow for two full days of training for him and his staff of 24, and so we accommodated him. So the word is getting out there of what we have available. People are calling us and they are booking with us, and so that's a great thing. I will say, most of the events that we have and that we have on the books coming up are private events, so you don't always see the events advertised on Facebook or on our matrix board because they're not open to the public, but it's very good to have all the different private events coming to us. Wayne Woman Expo this Saturday is a public event, so we are advertising that and that is open to the public, and they're welcome to come to that 10 to 3 this coming Saturday. Just to give you a few numbers, we've got some rotating poster-sized billboards out in several different places, and they rotate around the county and actually the region. A few are outside the county. January through March, we had 3,648,528 total impressions from all of our billboard locations, and the billboard company has estimated that from March to June, we'll have 2,653 impressions from folks. We have some interstate outdoor boards a little further away in New Bern and Smithfield. The New Bern one so far has been seen by approximately 5 million-plus people. The one in Smithfield has been seen by 4.5 million people since we've had it up. Our website has about 18,000 page views. Actually, Facebook does a little better than the website as far as people looking to see what's happening, and so we do push Facebook more than any because we have better ways of communicating with people through Facebook. They can send us an instant message. We can answer that message. Some of our stats on Facebook, since February 13th, we've had 62,000-plus impressions. That's people reading our posts, seeing our posts. We've had 7,465 post engagements. That means someone actually clicked on our post and either opened a link, said they liked it, shared it with their friends, whatever. Our current page likes are 1,915. That's when people actually go to our Facebook page and click the like button that they want to follow us and see all of our posts. That's up 1,621 since February 13th. Back in February, right after we first started our Facebook page, we only had a couple hundred people at first, and so that has really grown and will continue to grow that. Some of our most active posts, we had a post, "How Do You Need Your Event Set Up?", that had interactions with over 17,000 people. Be a Part of History, a little over 8,000. We did a promotion to like our page and got a little over 8,000. We did the Cooperative Extension Master Gardeners Plant Sale. That got a few, a little over 8,000 people with it. And Have You Seen Our New Building?, a little over 8,000. So our publicity is going well. People are reacting to the publicity. They're following up with it. They're giving us a call, and hopefully that will continue. Any questions?
Questions? Should've asked you earlier.
Sorry?
Oh, the papers out there, how we doing? Maybe I should be asking you that question. Are we continuing to sell them or?
Yes, sir. I'm getting ready to turn in the fourth order. I believe we'll be over 150 papers. All three orders are in, and actually the third was one of the largest orders that we had.
How many we have installed, do you know?
I believe we're right at 140.
Okay. I just haven't been out there in a couple of weeks, too.
We do have people who have bought the bricks, stopping by to see the bricks.
I know. I was out there looking at one there. Yeah, I was out there doing it, and I said, "It's not there yet."
Yeah, yeah.
I told you we had it, but it had not been installed.
Exactly. So, and yeah, we'll continue to push that.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. Wade?
Where do we stand on the plaque on the wall, whatever? Where do we stand on getting it corrected?
That is supposed to be installed later this month. All the artwork has been sent to the company for the redo and for the printing of the Maxwell Center sign at the top about the Maxwell family, and it is due to be installed, I believe, around the 25th of this month.
Mr. Chairman, my comment is it's good when a plan comes together. Great job.
Yes, it is.
Great job.
Thank you.
This was what the vision was on the Maxwell Center, and you were making it happen.
I appreciate it. My staff helps a lot do that, and we'll continue working toward that goal of just making it successful.
They're always smiling when I go out there. And even though Kevin wasn't there that Saturday for the Master Gardeners, there was a crowd of people out there. Your folks were working hard. They really were.
Mr. Chairman, I think I, you know, on Kevin's side, I think I mentioned maybe at the last meeting, I understand some of the vendors for the curb market said that their business is up probably two-thirds above what it was at the Wayne Center. So they say they open at 3:00, but you better get there before 3:00 or you're going to go home with nothing.
Any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to tell you, please. I know that our manager's working hard to get diverse groups coming into the Maxwell Center, and we encourage all of the public to contact him for family reunions, school reunions, all those things that we know happen in Wayne County. Appreciate the diversity in your staff.
Thank you. They all do a really good job, and you know, the events that we have had so far have all been very complimentary of my staff, of the building, of what's available in the building and just, you know, how we do the events. And so I think people are seeing that, you know, we offer, it is a full-service building, and when they come to our building, they're going to get what they need to get, and we're going to make sure that it goes well for them. And so far, that's been the case, and we've gotten very good feedback from them.
I know we're a little more expensive than some of the other venues here locally, but the number of events you're having and you're getting, it goes to show that apparently it's well worth the extra cost.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I just wanted to give a shout-out, as Ed says, because I attended the Friends of Seymour Gala, and it was absolutely perfect.
Good.
Everything was organized, even though it may not have been behind the scenes, but it looked to us like everything came together. So I encourage our citizens here in Wayne County, if you haven't been to the Maxwell Center, go by and take a look and see what's happened in our county. And you're doing, you and your staff are doing a great job, and I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate this.
Wednesdays and Fridays, is that right?
Yes, tours are Wednesdays and Fridays at 3:00. No need to make an appointment at that time. You can just come on Wednesdays and Fridays at 3:00 and join the tour. If you need a tour at a different time or you'd like to sit down and discuss rental with us, just give us a call and we'll set an appointment with you and sit down and try to take care of whatever it is you need.
All right. Thanks so much.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Moving on to our next presentation is Ms. Linda Harper from the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee and Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee.
Okay. I'm Linda Harper, chairman of the Wayne County Advisory Committee on Aging, and I'm giving our annual report. And I have with me two of our committee members this morning. I'd like to introduce you at this time. It's Deborah Austin. She's our newest member, and Alvin Bullock. Thank you for coming. This is the Community Advisory Committee Report for the Adult Care Homes in Wayne County. As ombudsman for senior citizens, we observe our adult care homes to maintain the spirit of the resident's Bill of Rights, and they are posted in every home, and we promote the community involvement to ensure quality care for the elderly and disabled as stated in NCGS 131D-32 and GS 131E-128. We complete reports for the regional ombudsman, which help homes prepare for audits, as well as apprise ourselves of the general conditions under which the residents live in homes and work for the best interest of the residents. We have nine members on our adult care committee, which is Fran Casey, Alvin Bullock, Beverly Decker, Aldia Lepar, Joyce O'Hanley, Jeri Sherrod, Ethel Sampson, and Deborah Austin. There are nine family care homes with 49 beds, 13 adult care homes with 757 beds, and we have three nursing homes. We visited all of the homes in the county, served by the committees quarterly and when needed, spending about 400 hours of advocacy. Educational efforts were provided to residents as follows. We have provided in-service for staff on client rights. We had a full day of training, which included a simulation of Alzheimer's issues with Mark Hensley, State Director for Dementia and Alzheimer's. I taught a class on the flag and pointers for voting and helped residents who requested help with learning who the candidates were and how to do absentee ballots. We have counsel with residents and their family to ensure the residents' needs were met. We were able to prevent neglect in some cases and assist guardians in identifying issues that prevent accidents. We have counseled families on how to find the best home for their loved ones. The committee encouraged community interaction with the facilities as follows. We encouraged community organizations to provide services and community activities for the adult care homes. We facilitated several luncheons for some residents to go out to their favorite restaurant. We have assisted organizations to provide fruit and candy on special occasions and holidays. We have provided toothbrushes and toothpaste to residents in a home. We helped organizations provide magazines and basketball for residents. The committee has kept themselves informed on aging issues and efforts to educate the community on issues affecting residents in long-term care by the following. I attended an NC Area Agency on Aging workshop in the Triangle on elder abuse and neglect and shared it with the committee. I've subscribed to the Voice, a national newsletter that advocates for seniors and alerts us to the important issues involving seniors around the nation. Three of us attended a bedbug workshop in New Bern and shared information with staff after the outbreak of bedbugs. We received quarterly training from East Carolina Council on Aging. One member is on the Wayne County Council Services on Aging and shares information with us. One member is on the Governor's Advisory Council for the Aging and has shared ideas from that. I have served on an ad hoc committee for the Joint Legislative Oversight Committee of the DHHS to reform the Adult Care Protection Service in the state. In this capacity, I've done extensive research into elder abuse and neglect, which has enabled us to provide better services for Wayne County. A member also is a representative for the Wayne County on the Regional Area Agency on Aging. They receive quarterly training and participate in approving policy and planning for the seniors in a nine-county region. Some committee members have been involved in grievance resolutions when a resident passed away in the home, and we have had weekly Bible studies in one of the homes for 30 years. The strengths of our facilities lie in the fact that they are fairly clean and most administrators cooperate well with the observations and recommendations that we have. The weaknesses of the facilities are primarily with the age of some of the homes, and some of the homes are old and need repairs. Coordination of local agencies and the homes is sometimes an issue. One of our members won the Regional Sarah Jo Award for Advocacy for the region. This award is to recognize a volunteer who puts forth extra effort to advocate for seniors in the region. A member is also representing us at the Governor's Listening Session Public Hearing in Wilmington and in Greenville on National Council, where we have another member that's on the National Council of Developmental Disabilities. Ed is the secretary. Another member is on the Home Health and Hospice Committee. So we stay very busy trying to help our seniors, and we want you to know that if you have seniors that need long-term care or any of our citizens need it, that see us, we will try to help them get the best, locate the best fit for their senior. And if they have problems, we are an advocate or a liaison between the home and the administration. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Sure. I'd like to make a comment from personal experience. This Wayne County Advisor Committee on Aging is very important because my mom was in a nursing home for about five years, and as you know, the care that your loved one gets depends on the relationship you have with the staff of that facility. But at the same time, there's a process for a grievance. If you have a complaint, and I believe the Wayne County Advisor Committee at this particular nursing home came in to listen on a regular basis to complaints from loved ones, kinfolks like myself. So don't ever think that we may not have to go to a nursing home or facility in our future. We need an oversight system, and this Wayne County Advisor Committee on Aging, I know from experience, does a fantastic job in helping and oversight for our seniors that are in these care facilities. So I want to preach, I want to say that I appreciate what you do, and some of us sitting on this board one day may have to call on you for advice because we don't know what the future holds. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Harper. Okay, let's move on to public comments. I'm a little past 9:05, but however, the public comment section is open. You've got four minutes to speak, and if you wish to do so, please come up and give us your name, your address, and your phone number. Am I quite there? I guess we'll close it out. Thank you. Okay. Former committee, Mr. Girly.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We'd like to recommend the reappointment of Linda Harper and Jimmy Ford to the Regional Agent Advisory Committee. I'd like to put this forward in motion.
Got a motion on the floor, is any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Your back. Thank you. We discussed the items in the consent agenda in the 8 o'clock session. Is any discussion on that?
I move we approve the consent.
Motion authority to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Mr. Hennicott, new business?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we would like for the board to consider is a change for our landfill engineering services. And as you're aware, we sent out requests for qualifications for engineering firms to provide continual landfill engineering services. As you know, between all the reports that they have to do, we really need somebody basically on call at our landfill to provide that service. The firm the county has been using, which has done a good job for us in the past, has been municipal engineering, but they have serviced the county for over 29 years, and we felt that it was time to relook at that contract and relook to see if there was other options out there that may best suit our landfill. We sent out requests for qualifications and received six submittals, and we interviewed four firms. And I would like to thank the interview committee. The committee was made up by our landfill director, Tim Rogers, Kendall Lee, Assistant County Manager, Chip Crumpler, Noel Woods, Ryan Preble, and myself. And we conducted these interviews on April 20th. At this time, we would like to recommend that we begin negotiations with Smith Gardner Engineering Service out of Raleigh to provide this service for our landfill. They are currently doing the air quality monitoring now. One thing that we liked about Smith Gardner is that they are landfill-focused. 95% of their business plan is focused on just landfill engineering. The other 5% is on environmental. We like that that is the core of their business and looking specifically at landfill issues, not a secondary, you know, water and sewer. Well, we also do landfill as well. This is the core of their business. And with your approval, we would like to begin negotiations with Smith Gardner to provide this service for our landfill.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation from the county manager? Got a motion on the floor, is any questions, Mr. Hennicott? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, on the agenda, we have a motion to approve the proclamation for Older Americans Month, and I think we have someone here who's going to come up to say this. Hey, don't bother.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Everyone is doing well as well. Thank you for allowing me to come here today and speak with you. My purpose today is to inform you and the public that May is Older Americans Month, and this year's theme is Engage at Every Age. And also, I want to share with you some special events and activities that will be happening this month. But first, with your permission, I'd like to read the proclamation and have the commissioners to accept. Wayne County, whereas the older adults in Wayne County are the roots from which our community grows, who bestow gifts of wisdom and insight upon younger generations and strengthen the bonds between neighbors to create a better place to live, and whereas our society can be enhanced by older adults aging peacefully in their communities, and whereas the older adults in Wayne County should be commended for their role in creating and bolstering the fiber of our community and nation, and whereas our community can provide that recognition and respect by enriching the quality of life for older Americans by increasing their opportunities to remain in their communities as active and engaged citizens, providing services, technologies, and support systems that allow seniors to foster and maintain connections within the community, emphasizing the value of elders by publicly recognizing their contributions to the diversity, strength, and unity of our community. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners thus hereby proclaim May 2018 as Older Americans Month in Wayne County, and urges every citizen to take time this month to honor our older adults. Our recognition of older Americans and their involvement in our lives can help us achieve stronger and more meaningful connections to each other and enrich our community's quality of life adopted this first day of May 2018.
Is there a motion to approve the proclamation? Is read.
Someone wants to approve.
Motion on the floor? Somebody over here.
He is older than I am, so.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. You approve, so go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. If you just, if you don't mind, I'd just like to share a couple of special events and activities that are happening at the Senior Center. Actually, tomorrow, May the 2nd, at 10:30 at the Peggy Seeger Senior Center, the senior Tar Heel Legislative Delegate Martha Bryan and her alternate, Brownie Dos, will present an update on the latest session of the Senior Tar Heel Legislative an update on the latest session of the Senior Tarheel Legislature. Seniors will be able to learn what recommendations concerning senior citizens are being made to our lawmakers, and they're also able to ask questions or provide information and input. And of course, any of the activities and things that will be going on, you can contact the Senior Center Program Manager, Rob Phillips, at 919-731-1589 if you have any questions or anything you need to register for. On that same day tomorrow afternoon, at 12:30, Michelle Estrada from the North Carolina Cooperative Extension, she's going to present a new program called Eat Smart, Move More, Take Control, and that will also be at the Senior Center. And this is a six-week session about chronic disease prevention program that provides strategies to help adults manage their health, and informs, and empowers, and motivates participants to change their eating and physical activity patterns. And the program provides opportunities for participants to track their goals and progress towards healthy eating and physical activity behaviors. And it's only an hour, and there'll be a basic cooking demonstration on healthy eating, a sample of the healthy recipe, and they'll receive that recipe. And it will be six weeks. It actually starts May the 9th. Tomorrow is just to introduce you to the program and have people to sign up, and it'll be from 12:30 to 1:30. So, if you have any questions about that, just call the Senior Center. And then we have an event we always look forward to each year, and that's our Goldsboro Fun Day in the Park, and I invite you and the public, seniors 60 and older, to attend. That's on May the 23rd. It will be at the Herman Park. We'll have a short walk. We'll have a live DJ, Wild Heart. She'll be there. We'll have games, line dancing, bingo, cake walk. So, a lot of things will be going on, as well as the picnic lunch. You'll have opportunity to win prizes in the games as well. And then on the 29th, on Tuesday, from 9:00 to 10:30, we're partnering with Sam's Club Pharmacy Manager Candace Bay, and she's going to hold a diabetes educational class, and everything's free that I'm talking about today. And this will also be at the Peggy Seeger Senior Center. Now, space is limited, so we ask you to call ahead and reserve your space. But this is going to be an interactive diabetes class, and she'll discuss managing your diabetes, what you need to know about blood sugar, healthy eating, and your medications. And it'll be once a month. It's an ongoing thing that we'll have there. Okay? Any questions?
Busy, busy.
Yes. That's what we should be, right?
That's right.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I think everybody up here is a bit aged and qualified.
I'm going to get you in there. I promise you, and you won't regret it. You'll enjoy it. And those that have visited, you know it's a great place to be. Thank you so much.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
When is your next tour?
Whenever you want it. I'll give it to you.
No, you have one scheduled?
Oh, you're talking about a trip?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. We're going to Noah's Ark in June in Kentucky, and we'll visit the Creation, excuse me, the Creation Museum. And then we have one in September, Cape Cod trip. So, you can talk to Harmonita Harris, ask for her. She's a volunteer. She stays about once or twice a week, or just ask for me, and I'll help you with it. But, and also, if you have any questions about activities going on at the Senior Center, you can go on WayneGov.com under Services on Aging, and you'll see our newsletter and calendar.
Okay.
And the trips are open to anyone. You do not have to live in Wayne County since the senior is paying for that trip.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month, and I think we have someone for that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Glad to see everyone. I'm Emily Peacock. I am the president of the Local Mental Health Association. I have my T-shirt on because I want you to see that we were chartered in 1962, at which time the county commissioners and Mental Health Association were able to begin mental health services in Wayne County. Before 1959, there were none. So, we just want to know how hard we work together. We realize mental health services are delivered a little differently now, and that's something that we have to be conscious of and continue to work toward. But I want to introduce with me some of our board members, Troy Ferguson, Bobby Jones, and then Vanessa Hill is representing East Point. We're working very closely with East Point now in delivering information and services that are available to our citizens. One of the things that we have coming up that I want to share with you. Anxiety 101. Does anybody know about anxiety? Well, we want to help us better informed, so we do have a presentation on the 17th at Wayne Community College at 6:30. This is open to anyone. Dr. Steve Peters from Cherry Hospital will be the presenter, and we will have a panel of those involved talking about how it affects our community. But at this time, I do want to read the proclamation, and I appreciate your time for this. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall physical health and emotional well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and where there's a strong research that diet, exercise, sleep, and stress management can help all Americans protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support prevention efforts. Now, therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2018 as Mental Health Month in Wayne County. The Wayne County Board of Commissioners can call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Wayne County to recommend our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate accessible services for all people with mental health conditions before stage four this first day of May 2018.
Is there a motion to approve the proclamation? It's read.
So moved.
A motion on the floor, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And we have been involved. Yesterday, we did something with the school systems on autism, and we also worked with East Point in doing the Harm Reduction Forum yesterday. So, we are trying to make mental health issues aware and better educate our public so they can receive services that make us all more viable citizens. So, thank you very much for your interest.
Thank you. All right.
Welcome to the April 2018 edition of Catch a Glimpse, produced by Wayne County Public April has been a busy month for Wayne County, including the addition of EMS Station 10, the Antioch-Pate Town EMS Station. EMS Station 10 will house a 24-hour EMS crew, as well as two local volunteer fire department engines. The Wayne County Public Affairs Department hosted the first quarterly communications meeting, a partnership between the county and local public information officers. We covered events at Seymour Johnson, including the Rocketeers returning home from deployment. April 8th kicked off National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Chris Barnes gave our viewers a nice look at the Office of Emergency Services 911 Center. The remains of Goldsboro native and Vietnam veteran Colonel Edgar Davis were returned home to Goldsboro in April, and we were there to pay tribute. The Arts Council stopped by to talk about their Made on Main event, as well as other events going on downtown. We visited the University of Mount Olive for a sit-down interview with Dr. Philip Kerstetter, and we also spoke with Franklin Gross about all the music events going on at the University of Mount Olive. We spoke with Aaron Holmquist from Seymour Johnson in our From the Flightline series. And also, of course, had to check in with Julie Beck, talking about the Pickle Festival. Chairman Bill Pate stopped by for two episodes of Chairman's Corner, and we even made it outside the beautiful Maxwell Center on a nice day to film one episode. The Wayne Executive Jetport was host to a Controller Appreciation Day in April, an event where Seymour Johnson Air Force Base air traffic controllers get to spend a day with local pilots. Made on Main took over the streets of downtown Goldsboro, including murals being painted on the crosswalks in downtown. We had the opportunity to interview Raytrill Caldwell, the team director of the Wayne and Johnston County Boys and Girls Club, who just won a national award. Wayne Community College hosted a science fair, and we got a firsthand look at some of the experiments that were being done. We checked in with Michelle Hill for our monthly wellness check, and she talked about alcohol awareness in April. Jessica Strickland from the North Carolina Cooperative Extension joined us for an episode of In the Garden, where we discussed the types of tomato plants you should be planting. And as always, in an effort to brand the county, Wayne TV published a new social media promo This has been Catch a Glimpse for April 2018. We'll see you next month.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I must say, must improve.
Very nice.
Yeah. Joe and I were out in the courtyard, I was selling brick papers.
Thank you, Karen. All right. Let's see here. County Manager's comments.
I first will start off. If I could have Kevin Johnson, please. Kevin doesn't tell us everything that he knows all the time. Kevin recently was awarded the North Carolina State Award of Excellence, which is the most prestigious honor that is bestowed upon non-takeoutting members. Kevin didn't buy us, and my feelings are still hurt, but I think Kevin was surprised as well with the nomination. I think his staff helped write the nomination, and he was nominated by the district director. But it really is a prestigious award for Kevin and for the work that he has done for extension and within the department. And we just wanted to publicly recognize Kevin back here at home for the work that he does and for receiving this award. So, go pack.
Go, go pack. And I do want to thank, I want to thank Wayne County, because I couldn't do what I do if it weren't for Wayne County. You know, y'all supported extension. You've supported me over the years. I am low-key. That's the power of Facebook. You know, you heard James talk about Facebook a while ago. My wife put it on there, and I wouldn't have done that. But anyway, it goes around the world on Facebook, and in any case, I appreciate everything y'all have done. There was a lot of write-up about the Maxwell Center, of course, and what it's already doing for Wayne County, what it's doing for agriculture, not only in Wayne County, but in the southeast, probably the state. There was some comments about the Coral Bestag Leadership Program, which y'all know and have supported, the We Dig It Agriculture Campaign. We've been doing that close to 10 years now, and I think that's been very effective in highlighting what agriculture does in our county. So, those were some of the key things. It was a special moment. I was not expecting it. I know a lot of times with awards, sometimes they're almost self-nominated, or you know they're, you're putting in for it. I had no idea. It was a shock, and I was pleased. So, thank you for everything that y'all have allowed me to do. So, thank you.
And I actually saw you blush just a little.
Yeah. Like I say, I am a little more.
I didn't come down there for a picture.
Well, I'll do whatever y'all would like.
I love your low-key and all that, but.
I want to get a picture of the plant.
I might have to say, we have a box here.
We need to have some comments.
He thinks summer starts on May 1st.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, what we're doing, pictures, John said we need to have a restaurant out there. I got an idea, y'all.
I'm talking, I'm saying, you need to think about who they.
I just want a pig picture.
Good to see that. Thank you. Thank you again, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, thank you. So, I will give, if y'all want a quick update on the farmer's market, Mr. Henneken, is that okay?
Please. The floor is yours.
I'm sorry. Well, while y'all are getting back up there, you know, James mentioned the curb market is doing fantastic. We actually had a vendor meeting with them Friday, just to make sure that everything, all the protocol for safety and stuff is going on. But, you know, traditionally at the Wayne Center, that was from 3:00 to 6:00. Well, now, you better be there about 2:30, and don't come about 5:00 or 5:30, because they're already packing up. So, we had our vendor meeting at 5:30, and they close at 6:00. So, that tells you that they were already sold out and done. So, that's going great. The farmer's market there this morning, when Jessica Strickland, or Jessica Hogan, our 4-H agent is with me, when we left this morning, they're putting insulation in the ceiling. I thought I saw the roof had been delivered, but then it looked like it disappeared again. So, I'm not sure. I'm sure what's going on here, Mr. Henneken. We've been fighting that roof for a while. But in any case, the farmer's market appears to, it's really moving forward. Hopefully, we can be open now, maybe in June. That's what we're hoping for. We've taken application for vendors, hoping to have interviews for a part-time farmer's market manager next Friday. So, hopefully, that stuff's moving forward. But we have been delayed, and then delayed again, but we're, hopefully, we'll get that open. You know, watermelons and sweet corn will be the next big things that'll hit, usually around the end of June. Fourth of July is usually what the target is on those. Questions?
We do have the bus coming out there. Got the stop up yet?
I don't know if the bus stop is up, but it is ordered, and it is at facilities now. So, we just have to.
I'm just hoping to be ready, by the time it's ready, so that we can catch them.
Right. I'll check with Kendall to see where it's at.
And the greenhouse, what's going on with that? I stepped in it the other day when I was out there for the master garden or something.
So, we don't have any utilities hooked up into the farmer's market? I think a lot of that is being held up.
The greenhouse.
We don't have utilities there because we're waiting on the farmer's market. They've got to do some connections there. Kendall's well aware of it. We do have to run water, electricity, and gas over there to the greenhouse.
I think that's all stubbed out there anyway.
It is. It's all stubbed out right at the farmer's market. So, but Kendall says we're just kind of in a state of delay right now because of the farmer's market. But hopefully, we'll get the greenhouse and the farmer's market up and going soon. So.
Anybody else? Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for allowing me to do that, and we really do appreciate the work Kevin does, and he is very humble about, he didn't tell us. We had to find that out on our own. So, appreciate Carol as well. One thing I do want to update you on.
One thing I do want to update you on, or Mr. Acock may shoot me dead, is the EMS substation bid date. We are looking June 1. We've had some issue with some surveys, had some issues with the location with respect to septic tanks, so they had to reconfigure some of the site, but we are looking at a June 1 bid date. So it is moving forward. The other question that I have is, we're trying to bid out the Shell Building and the EMS stations at the same time, you know, kind of the thought process. We're not bidding it as one package, kind of bidding it together to see if we can get better bids, you know, for doing a large package at one time. The question is, the design of the Shell Building, do we want a free stand, which means no columns, or do we want a clear span? The clear span is $300,000 more, what we have been told. The one down the middle bay is not going to cost any more difference than the smaller spans. So we need to, to be firm about what we're looking for. Do we want the columns down the middle, or do we want a clear span? What they need to design.
Only thing I got to say is, don't let the Shell Building hold up the EMS station.
Well, this is the last thing we need on, on the Shell. This is the last thing we need on the Shell.
You need a motion on it?
We need, we need, we need, because the, the, there's been a lot of discussion about the, the clear span, but again, that's a $300,000 increase. However, you may have more options with industry, because, you know, some people may not like or need the columns.
I think we talked about, I would suggest, I would suggest to, I think I mentioned in one meeting previous, to have the center columns, because it really doesn't inhibit one, one column down the center, doesn't inhibit a manufacturing plant, for example, setting their machinery. Normally, they have a, an aisle going beside of those columns, or, you know, so, you know, I wouldn't, I don't know if I'd go the extra $300,000 for it or not. I'd go with the center, I'd suggest going with a center column. Do you make that in the form of a motion? I will, if the board, if we're through discussing it, if we're through discussing it, I make that in the form of a motion. Motion on the floor, any discussion?
Oh, totally agree. Okay, I, I just wanted clarification. I didn't want to come back and say, well, I thought this, this is.
Well, do understand, we started out with them 50-foot on center, I think. So for them, to be only down the center, I think that works out great.
Okay. I agree. Okay.
Because the costs are rising anyways, so that's another way to cut some costs.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? All right. On the floor, if you agree with him, please, please, right hand. Hey, we're kind of, kind of got thrown off on that.
Right, yeah.
Now, you got that straight down, you said the bid died early.
But, 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 but Mr. Acock did a, a threat of death if I did not have a, a date, so I wanted to make sure that.
Could I inquire how the location of a septic tank would have anything to do with the bid?
Well, because I had to redesign the, the site, the, the site plan, you know, where the building was to be. Because we got back the information from environmental health about where the septic field needs to be. Well, we had that originally where the building was going to be, so we had to really readjust the site plan.
That didn't change the size of the building?
I agree. But, but it did the, the layout, it did the, the layout of it.
Site work.
The site work for it, right.
You, you're not going to win this one, just go ahead and get that.
But, but we're, we're, we're full steam ahead, we're full steam ahead.
Well, if you can get all those drafting done two weeks earlier, that's moving on.
Yes, sir.
The sooner the better. Well, this thing's been delayed, delayed, delayed.
Yes, sir. We, we agree.
We've been in that budget year.
But that, that's all I have this time.
I'm sorry, we're picking on you.
I think now.
Okay, bring up something else, or we can pick.
Wait till CIP, wait till CIP, we'll be good, buddy. But I'm, I'm, that's all I have this time, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayo, I'll start down there with you today.
Thank you, I've been pretty busy a few weeks. Went down to, attended the Mount Olive Airport, the hangar dedication down there, ribbon cutting. That was a good event, and I sleep where, I sleep where the Wayne County Jetport, I'm going to throw this in, there's, Jason has sent an inquiry to the DOT about what we're standing on our grants, so we're, we're trying to, we're trying to get the state to make a decision. They're, they're so slow in coming up with a formula, and of course, you know, Craig, you understand, you, you're on the board also, about how slow the process is. But at any rate, that's a whole subject, that's a whole discussion for another time. I also attended the Wish event. I've never been to that before. It was a, an anniversary celebration, and I, boy, that, they're doing a lot, they do a lot for this community. So it was good to go to that. We also had a library board meeting, and I think during the budget time, the library board, we're concerned about the safety and security of our libraries, just like we are the schools. You'd be, you'd be surprised the kind of things that happen in a public library.
I'm not.
I mean, it's, it's amazing what people do, so it's time for us to also look at, at the security. Also went to the multi-sports complex ribbon cutting, which was, which was a fantastic setup. That's going to really, that's going to really push our city and county forward, in my opinion. We also have a Department of Social Services board meeting. I have to, I have to say that Department of Social Services is overall in the best shape that I've seen it in my three years of being on that board. We still have a ways to go, but the, the change has been just tremendous. So looking forward to, to things, new and better things coming from that. One of the things I want to mention, because Steve Herring retired from Wayne Community College, and Steve Herring and I go back, way back, when he worked at Cooper Standard Automotive, who was the plant manager, and our, our shop did a lot of work for them back then. Steve Herring, I really hated to see him retire, because he, being from private industry, he was a tremendous help on the advanced manufacturing center. This guy knows construction, he knows how to, as, as the old saying is, he knows how to stretch a dollar bill. He, he just came from that mindset. But he had a great retirement, he said he had four or five grandchildren, and that he was going to enjoy himself the rest of his days here, so that was a good event, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say to, in response to Mr. Mayo's concerns about safety at the libraries, we are working on some changes to policies of our county attorney, we're, we're going to present that in the next board meeting. We've also had some conversations with Chief West, and also with the sheriff, and I think the sheriff's left, but, but I, I do agree that it is an issue, but we're going to bring something to you at our next meeting.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Cromartie?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, I almost need to say that I went to all those things that Mr. Mayo, it seemed like we were all, most of them together, we showed up together, it seems like. DSS, I would like to bring attention to that, and he says in the best shape. As far as full employment, it is close to, I think I seen Ms. Gerald shaking her head, it is close to what they call full employment. That doesn't mean the air position is filled, but it's so close that the way they read it, the state government and everywhere else, that's pretty, and we had, that was one of the things that was a glaring hole in the wall two or three years ago. We were up in the twenties, having folk that were not coming, leaving the county, just going home, I mean, all kinds of things, seemed like, and it wasn't any one thing, it was a multiplicity of things, so shout out to the new director and the staff that she's put in place, new, and the veterans that's there. They, they seem to, they're doing a good job, and, and not that all the departments, I think, get along well, they seem to get along well, they seem to, the, the leadership we meet with. And I always say folk need to enjoy coming to work, but they sort of seem like they enjoy coming to work, so that's a plus for them. I also went to the Mount Olive ribbon cutting for the new hangar, that was an excellent building they put down there. One small thing on my calendar, and I, I took the first invitation over the phone, and I put down a week early, so I, I went twice. I showed up a full week early, got a tour, and then came back for the real thing. So I saw a nice building twice within a week. The Wish program, I'm associated with it more through my wife, and I'd just like to mention her name, Hilton Cromartie is my wife, and she served as principal in the county, and she's had a close working relationship with the Wish program, and I think the thing that always made such a plus in our house is the population they serve. I mean, they really, children who may not get a chance to get immediate, on-time healthcare or some recognition, there's a healthcare problem or some discussion, they get that through the Wish program, and every chance the public gets, please recognize that group of nurses and folk that make that thing happen, and they've been real close relationship with our family over time. The multi-sports area, it, it speaks for itself, but this morning, I had an opportunity, put my truck in service, and then I got a ride back down with the shuttle service, and we had to come through there to drop someone else off, and I just listened to the folk who were in the car with me talk about it. Didn't say a word about anything from my knowledge of it, I just listened, because that's the way you learn most things, don't be chiming in, just listen. And they gave the greatest accolades for that new sports complex, and the school right beside of it, manager and to the school board, Dr. Dunsmore, and everybody who's involved in metal lane being put out there, they were, they were giving, kept congratulations on the sports complex. There was a lot of folk out there, one person was talking about the school, one school used it, or was out there playing, and they expect to see a lot of other folk, and then right, turned around, they were talking about the school. So to this group of people who meet here in this room every day, the public is looking, and, and just listening to those three people talk, who didn't know I could come back and bring this news to you all, I was, I was really pleased to hear the positive comments that they made. I think I have that, and Mr. Mayo's going to correct me if I don't. The new initiative in the county relating to a relationship between school administrations and maybe law enforcement and the court system as relates to youth in our county, and how they are adjudicated, and, and it comes down to a group of folk, our interest is that students don't get charged too early in their lives for things that will haunt them for the rest of their life. If they do certain things in school, however they do it, it's going to get put on their records, and it's going to be bad for them. So on that side, I say thanks to them who have worked on this and made it get to where it is now. But then I hold this other hand up, an issue of caution, that school administrators have spent years in coursework related to managing children, and however this initiative plays out, I will never turn away from the fact that the school system and the superintendent are the ones in charge of managing our students at school. And whatever us as commissioners is asked to play in it, and the role and responsibility of SROs, we just need to be mindful that the school personnel, the superintendent and his staff, and right on down through the school administration, has primary responsibility for children. It was said to me one time, that if a superintendent wanted to take a child out of school, and the principal of that school said no, that child would have to remain at school. That's just how important the role of the school building is to what happens to children. And I stand to be corrected if I have misquoted any law, but I think I'm close to being accurate on, so I'll leave it.
You got it.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter?
I was going to concede my time to Commissioner Bell down there, but you took all of my time. No comment.
Mr. Bell?
Well, I've been taking advantage of being out sick, so I didn't attend any meetings. I looked at them, and I said, well, should I go, or should I stay? But I went to one meeting, it was an unofficial meeting, and right where I had my operation, somebody grabbed me and shook me, told me how glad they were to see me. I said, okay, I'll wait another few weeks before I go back to the thing, so I don't have any report.
Mr. Acock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of the things that I attended has already been mentioned, so we'll just skip over that. But I have got a couple of things for Wayne Community College, and I don't remember whether I have mentioned this before, but it's been several weeks ago, Wayne Community College was recognized as one of the top five community colleges in the nation with their agricultural program. That was, that's, that's quite an honor to be one of five in the nation. Also, at the college, as y'all, we had discussed this before, a lot of the students at the college don't have transportation to get to and from the college, and they use the gateway system. Well, the bus stop for the college was out on Way Memorial, they had to get out, you know, the bus had to stop on Way Memorial, and the students had to walk across to get to the college. That has been changed, or is in the process of being changed, the, the bus will now go in the driveway at the college and put them off in front of the building, which is a whole lot safer for the, not only for gateway, but for the students also to, you know, not be stopping on Way Memorial. And also, another thing that happened at the college, the college lost a great leader recently, Mr. Kurt Keller. He, any of you knew Kurt? He was a great asset to the college, he was, he was a go-getter, anything that was going on, that they needed help on, he did not know how to say no. But not only that, it was a great loss to the college, this is going to be a great loss to the city of Goldsboro and the county of Wayne, because he just didn't concentrate on what was going on at the college. He was, he was involved in everything that was going on in Goldsboro and, and the county. And I just want to remember his family, but this is, this is going to be a great loss to our community. I did attend the opening, the ribbon cutting for EMS Station 10, and I want to thank our staff for the fantastic work that they did out there. But the most important thing is, I want to thank the Antioch community and the Paitown community, because if those two fire departments hadn't have come, got, you know, agreed, and community, because if those two fire departments hadn't have come, got, you know, agreed and, uh, and to, uh, merge those two departments, which I think is going to be a, a real asset to that community, especially on the insurance rating on, on some of the homeowners, uh, it's going to be a great asset to the northern end of Wayne County. Uh, but like I say, if, you know, if them, them merging is, is great for that two communities, but, uh, one of the main things is, uh, they saved, by us being able to, uh, get that building, they saved this county, uh, probably a couple hundred thousand dollars in not having to build a new EMS station there, because it was, a, a new EMS station right in that area was in the plans, but, uh, by us, uh, being able to get their building, uh, saved the taxpayers right at $200,000. You know, like I say, I've been, I attended some other events, but they've already been mentioned, but that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Gerald.
Mr. Chairman, last week I did attend to Grant and Grange's Sept Annual Community Service Awards, and they gave out about 10 or 12 or so, uh, individual and group awards. It was well-attended, it seems that, that, uh, Grange continues to grow and is well-attended and grows each year. And like Mr. Acock said, I attended a lot of other stuff, I would like to mention, um, the Mount Olive Airport, that new hangar is a very nice addition to Mount Olive, and I think it'd be a nice addition to Wayne County as well. Thank you.
Yeah, airport, that's a really nice, uh, building they've got down there, and, um, not that we're in competition, but it's time for us to get moving on ours down here at the jet port as well. And Mr. Dollery sent me an email about dollars that were coming out from DOT, and we had airports all around us that got money, and we need to make sure we pursue that as hard and aggressively as we can, because we don't need to miss out. The multi-sports complex, I thought that was great, having the general there that had his plane there, I got a chance to talk to him, and, um, really nice guy, what was his name, Carol? He knew his first name, wasn't it Johnny?
Larry.
Larry, it was Larry, that's right. You got it. And just to comment on the DSS thing, that has changed a lot, because when I was over there, we were down social workers, I mean, it was 10, 12, 20, I don't know, I can't remember. And, um, hospital board, you know, I spend as much time on that as I do over here, I really do, it's a real educational process, and you don't get paid nothing over there. Uh, there is going to be a ribbon cutting on the eights for the, uh, surgical suite, so I encourage everybody to, to go over there and, and take a look at that, because it's an expensive endeavor, but it, it was, it was needed. So, that's what I have for today. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, uh, going back to the Antioch EMS station, we do also want to thank our, uh, facilities department as well, Kendall Lee, uh, we did all the renovations in-house, and that also saved us a, a incredible amount of money. Uh, Kendall's working on the final cost on that, but I also want to thank Carol Bowden and the staff of our Public Information Office, they really set up the, uh, grand opening with the snacks and the publicity, so I did, want to give a special shout out to Carol for that work, but, but, but again, it really was a great, great event, and, um, but I wanted to thank Carol and Kendall especially.
They did a great job.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before we move on, I, I, I'm reluctant, but since you do serve on the hospital board, uh, there's just a couple of questions I'd like to ask you if you-
Would you like to take my place over there?
No. I'll reserve a no until, maybe I hear this sounds, uh, is it, is it, is it, would it be an accurate statement, statement to say that a lot of our smaller practices are disappearing and going underneath the umbrella of the hospital?
They're going under, under the umbrella of UNC, not the hospital. That's what come employees of UNC.
But it is one thing though, isn't it?
They manage the hospital, they don't own the hospital. It's a fine line, I, I agree.
Well, okay, but the county's, maybe, maybe I have some past arguments, county may still own the hospital, or maybe not, but I'm talking about the, the management of it and decision made that affects our health. And would you say that, instead of dealing with, uh, entities that we used to deal with, it's all sort of coming underneath that UNC?
Yes, it is.
An interesting thing happened on the way to the forest. Uh, I got a letter in the mail from a company that collects past debts, and they apprised me of something that was supposed to happen in 2003. Now, that surfaced someplace, obviously out of some kind of computer network, because it had UNC Chapel Hill on it, it had UNC, and so you know that it had to be pulled out of some graveyard somewhere to get put in the UNC computer system, and they won't even doing that here in 2003. Why would I bring that up? I'm concerned about big conglomerates taking over small entities.
Uh, let me respond first, and I'm not doing it in defense of the hospital, but it is the way of what's happening in the field of medicine this day and time. The small hospitals are going to find it very difficult to survive at all, and like it or not, it's kind of the way it's being driven, because of where the monies are coming in. They do, they do offer some good things.
And I've used them.
But, but the reason it came with the UNC letter, once they switched over to the management, everything that goes out, goes out with UNC on it. It should, it should say UNC at Wayne or something like that, I can't remember. But anyway, Mr.-
Can I, can I say?
Yeah.
One, one thing, Mr. Chairman, uh, I wanted to, uh, address just a second about, uh, Mr. Camardi's, uh, all this partnership, uh, thing for just a second. It's called the Wayne County, it's called PAC, P-A-C-T-S, the Wayne County Partnership Agreement, Community Teams With Schools. I want to, I want to let the public know and the commissioners know, uh, some of my concerns, because I've read this thing, all 37 pages, and I have a lot of questions. When we were in school, when I say us older folks were in school, whenever we got in a fight, for example, it didn't go on our record, but the teacher and the principal took care of it. And so, I agree with, with, with things that go on, that, uh, like we did when we were in school, because I probably wouldn't be sitting here today if I was arrested or suspended for everything that I did when I was in school. But it, but looking, looking from the outside in, it looks like to me that this, this partnership agreement, why should not, this not be something that we should put the authority back to the schoolteachers and the principals without having to do an initiative like this? This should be a school board policy decision to give the authority and the discipline back to the teachers in the classroom. That's, that's my opinion, okay? Most people may not agree, but that's fine. The only thing that I have that I am having a struggle with, is that in this, one of the exceptions here, is simple possession of marijuana, personal use. I have a problem with that. I still believe that we should, we should look at a no tolerance policy when it comes to drugs, because if we give anyone a pass, these, these kids need to understand that if they make a bad decision, there's going to be a price to pay. Are we sending the wrong signal if we find them in possession of marijuana and give them a pass? Number two, the, the students that are doing everything according to the book and never get in trouble, are we slapping them in the face by giving someone else a pass? I've got a problem with this one issue on marijuana. The other things that are on here, that's fine, but it's only going to be as good as the, the, the principal and the staff of each school. That's another thing I'm concerned about. There's going to be a committee according to this in every school, every school's going to have their own oversight committee. Is it going to be consistent from this school to that school? Is one person that gets caught with marijuana, are they going to get expelled and the one over here get a pass? I have a lot of questions about this, that's why I have not come out publicly and said this is what we need to do. So, I'm going to be meeting with some people this week to get some clarification on this, because, uh, it's only going to be as good as it's written and the people that's going to implement it, and that's my comments, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I don't think we finished our closed session, just went and returned to the same thing. I guess there must have been a closed session. Raise your right hand.